Okay. Yes. Okay. So like, you can take it out if you can.
Turn the light on.
Okay.
And then even if it's all your business.
Oh, great. That's over again.
You can tell me if you want that off.
You don't want that off. So what happens is...
It could be three pages. Can I use it to fill out something?
Of course.
Especially if you have so many. Oh, we're past time, sorry. Welcome to tonight's meeting, October 14th. This is our pre-meeting. City Council reports. Or first, is there any questions for tonight's agenda? See, none? Council reports? No?
Counselor Carmelia.
Um, yeah, I'll just say, this morning, I was trying to check the name of the church real quick, but he, uh, this morning, I attended a funeral for a friend and coworker. And he's just a really wonderful person, but it happened this morning in Westminster. And I'm trying to, it was the Christ Community Church. And I just wanted to give a shout out to just someone who was really wonderful and who was a part of our community and who was really intelligent and well-spoken. And his name was Ben Ling, and he has a wonderful family. And it was a really moving service. And so, I just wanted to say, acknowledge him. And I attended the de-escalation tactics training that our officers go through annually. I think they go through it multiple times annually, but our chief was kind enough to walk me through that. And I learned a lot, and it was extremely informative. I will definitely attend that again. And I'm just really grateful. So thank you, Chief, for everything I learned there, and thank you for your time. And I think that's it. Yeah.
Counselor Ireland.
My daughter got married on Saturday, so my whole week was focused on that. And it turned out really great. I mean, the weather was like 80 degrees in Utah, so...
Wow.
I couldn't, I couldn't believe how nice it was, because my husband was saying, according to the past weather on that date, it should only have been 65 for the highs. So we were pretty lucky, and it was an outdoor affair, so it was really nice. And now I can move on to other things with city council. I want to have that hanging over me.
Congratulations. Yay.
Thank you.
Counselor Demont?
I have nothing to report.
I went to one of, there was many events this weekend for the North Glenn City Hall. It's a net zero, um, counselor, Carmelia and Hot were there. And it was just fun to get to walk it and see it and learn everything that they've done there. It's, it's a great facility, and, um, it's beautiful. So that was fun. Um, US 36 mayors and commissioners meeting. We did finally get the peak performance numbers and estimates and stuff for finishing fast tracks. And actually, it's lower than what they originally told us when we were doing fast tracks. So some of us were sort of hopeful. So we'll see. They only have 1,100 boardings for the day, which I think is wrong, but we've been right all the time. RTD has been wrong all the time, so, um, we'll see. But, so, um, that had a meeting this morning at the mile-high flood district. It's just been sort of a busy meetings couple of weeks, so...
Mayor, I'll add as well that I plan to attend Dr. Cog on Wednesday on Mayor Potem's behalf, so I'll be there.
Yeah, great. City manager?
No comments here. I do have a report for, I'm right up at the dais.
Okay. Anyone else? You've got three pages of green pages to fill out for Ms. Abby, and you've got plenty of time to do it. She's not going to let you go through the door unless you...
I can give them to her.
We have an extra pen around.
He's mine.
Thank you.
Mr. Franklin gave me that one.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City of Council Meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to rules of decorum and that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind attendees there is an expectation that this meeting shall not be disrupted and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. Counselor Demott, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I would move that we excuse Mayor Protem Nermella from tonight's meeting.
I second. It's moved and seconded to excuse Mayor Protem, Sir Nermella, for tonight's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the minutes of September twenty-third.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't call roll.
Oh. Roll, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demott.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nermella. And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Thank you. So does the vote for Mayor Protem's excuse still, okay, all right. Minutes of September twenty-third. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four City Council Meeting as presented.
Second.
Counselor Ha.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would like to propose to table item ten A to the October twenty-third special meeting. So full council is here and available for vote on the budget. Counselor Demott?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table, and, oh, yes, sir.
Mayor, just to clarify, so the motion, would it be fair to describe it as a motion to continue the consideration of the budget ordinance to a special meeting on Monday, October twenty-first?
Twenty-third. Twenty-third, twenty-first? Twenty-first, sorry, I had the wrong date now. It's Monday.
I accept the change.
Do you want roll call or do you want?
Yeah, let's go ahead and go to roll call vote. Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
That brings us to presentations. Tonight, we have proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, and Counselor Ha will present. The Foothills Young Marines accept the proclamation. Go ahead and open those.
So, we will be presenting this to the Foothills Young Marines. So if you would like to join. And can you tell us your names and a little bit about the Foothills Young Marines?
I am Young Marine Sergeant Muko. I have been in the Young Marines for about three years now. The Foothills Young Marines is part of the youth organization of the Young Marines. It is an organization from ages eight to eighteen that focuses in the values of leadership, teamwork, and discipline. One of the main things we are known for as Young Marines is the Drug Demand Reduction Program, which helps educate the youth on drugs, their dangers, effects, and how we can stop them.
I'm Young Marine Private Dayton and along, that's it.
I'm Young Marine PSC Garcia, and that's it.
Thank you. So the proclamation is whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, and whereas Red Ribbon Week offers people the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle, and whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October twenty-third through thirty-first, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim October twenty-third through thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week, and call upon the people of Westminster to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And with the fire folks, meet me down front. Welcome. You guys have been busy. I've been reading Facebook and you make me exhausted with all the things you've been having this month. But they check car seats, they're looking at smoke alarms, they're looking at everything, and you do it well. I remember going and helping in a neighborhood and we checked for batteries and replaced them for people. So it's that time of year, you need to be doing that, but introduce yourselves and share a little bit about what you have been doing this week.
Okay, my name is Bob Hose, I'm Deputy Fire Chief, and I'm going to pass it to Emily to share everything we've been doing.
My name is Emily Peak, I'm a public information specialist with the Westminster Fire Department. So this year's theme for Fire Prevention Month, it's technically a week but we treat it for the whole month, is smoke alarms and make them work for you. So we're asking our residents to make sure that they have working smoke alarms in their home. Your smoke alarm should be tested once per month and replaced every ten years. Fire can move very quickly in a home, so smoke alarms provide that early notification so you can exit your home quickly. We also want to make sure that you have working or smoke alarms that meet all of your family members' needs, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. If you'd like some additional information, we have some on our webpage. You can also visit one of our smoke alarm safety pop-up booths at Westminster Rec Centers throughout the rest of the month. There you can come by and actually get a free smoke alarm.
I'm Jim Gagliano, I'm the Fire Marshal with the city.
And will you all be at Westy Fest?
Yes, we will be at Westy Fest.
Perfect, another place you can come and listen. I know that's Fire Prevention Month because of a tragic accident in Chicago, it was, where they lost two hundred and fifty people. I can't even, I was reading that, and that's a, that's a bad thing. And so I know you take this so seriously, and we had a big open house just a few weeks ago at Station Four, and I don't know if it was a record group, but there were a lot of people and a lot of burgers and dogs eaten and kids having fun and helicopter coming, it was great. So thank you for all you do to keep us safe, and we have a proclamation for you tonight. Whereas in two thousand twenty-three, the City of Westminster Fire Department responded to seventeen thousand and thirty-three emergency alarms, including a hundred and thirty-seven building fires, and the city had three million, three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars in building and content loss due to structure fires. And whereas in two thousand twenty-three, the City of Westminster had no citizens who died from the fire but had one citizen injured from fire. And whereas fire protection or prevention should be of concern to every Westminster citizen, and whereas the City of Westminster Fire Department depends on joint commitment and efforts involving citizens as well as firefighters to promote fire safety. And whereas the Westminster Fire Department has established a public education program that works to educate citizens on the hazards of fire and life safety. And whereas the National Two Thousand Twenty-Four Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home during Fire Prevention Month and year round. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do by proclaim the month of October as Fire Prevention Month in the City of Westminster and urge all citizens to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Month, two thousand twenty-four, and to support the many public safety messages, activities, and efforts of the City of Westminster's Fire Department. And I'm going to put a plug in, I don't know when yours Citizen Academy is starting, but it's usually in February or early March.
Yes, tentatively March, April.
Okay, and it is a wonderful thing to go to. The police department is in the midst of theirs right now. But just to let you know, if you want to walk in the shoes of a firefighter, that's the place to be and enjoy, and then join the Citizens Academy alumni afterwards. But thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with City Council. Each participant will be given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there's a public hearing scheduled for the item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when the public hearing is called. Tonight, there is one public hearing for the certification and support of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. During the regular council meeting, there is also a public hearing for the general improvement districts budgets and mill levies and WEDA, public hearing for the WEDA budget during those respective meetings this evening. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we received...
We had two emails and zero voicemails, and we have twenty-nine in-person speakers.
Okay, would you call the first person?
The first speaker is Jim Fenimore.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Thanks for the time to come up and speak before you. I'd like to take and give out some kudos to start out with. A few weeks back, I came up and spoke to you about the weeds that were along the railroad, along Seventy-second. We did get those cut back about fifty feet on both sides of the road, on Seventy-second, also on Bradburn and also on Lowell. So it's a lot safer, and we appreciate that very much, the response on that. So kudos out for that. Secondly, back in May, I came before council asking about getting the concrete replaced around the Clear Creek Nursing Home, and the city was able to... around the Clare Creek nursing home, and the city was able to get in there the very next week and replaced all of that sidewalk, and they were also able to take and make that sidewalk from thirty-six inches to forty-eight inches, so where they can get the gurneys in there a lot safer. So, kudos to that, really appreciate that. We just got a little bit of asphalt work left on that, but that project was great. And then, kudo goes out to Jody, and John Berkey, and Jacob Kaza. We met here a little bit ago about completing Eighty-Eighth to Zuni. That was a very productive meeting, and it looks like we can do some good positive things with that, to where we can take a lower the response time for emergency vehicles to get into that Westminster area that is outside the four-minute window. So, that was great. Last meeting you guys had, we were talking about, or you were talking about the disc golf. I just wanted to make sure you know that Highland Hills has a disc golf range that's right over there in that same area of Eighty-Eighth and Zuni. It's like about eighteen holes. It's on a hundred-and-forty-three acres. So, if you weren't aware of that, wanted to let you know about that. Another thing I'd like to bring up as a suggestion is, if you're sitting in the audience out here, we can't see you, Mayor, and some of the different council, because the podium's too tall. So, if you could take and lower the podium down about six inches, it would help everybody see you guys, and you could see us. Just a recommendation. And then also, I wanted to let you know that I spoke with Jody about this briefly, is that I'm going around and talking to the businesses in the yard district about helping back us up, about helping getting BNSF Railroad to clean up that track area. There's a lot of trash through that area, there's still weeds that, you know, I've got pictures of, they're eight feet tall. So, I'm gonna be continuing to get the businesses behind us, and then we can hopefully get code enforcement to send something to BNSF and clean that area up, because it's pristine once you get down by Westminster Station, but going west, it's a disaster. So, I, you know, that's Old Town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Bland. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Gary Bland. I seen a lot of you guys this last Saturday for a special event, somebody very special right here in front of me here, too. It was a pleasure meeting the parents of Shay, so that meant a lot to me. But I wanna thank everybody. I know Jody, we made contact, whether he had a good reason not to be there. You also, the wedding, that's fine. Everybody else, we had a great time. But anyways, I'm not using kudos, or kudos, I'm just gonna say mahalo. So anyways, I look forward to seeing you guys again in future events. It was nice seeing every one of you and the participation with us as residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Daryl Essen. Welcome.
So, last week, you guys wanted me to talk to you, huh? I've got two examples that the people in the seats behind me would be prudent to check upon. The first one is Surprise, Arizona, as in surprise, surprise, and Moscow, Idaho. Both of them are city councils. The first example is the mayor of that town had the thought in his head to point at the person who was talking at the podium, pointed at the two fellows over here, not here, but there, and said, "Arrest her." And they did. Why they did, I don't know, but they came up and put handcuffs on her and drug her out. Sad thing was that she had a daughter in the seats while she was speaking to the councils, and don't know what the outcome of that is, but it wasn't good for the daughter to experience something like that. Second example, Moscow, Idaho. This was during the COVID twenty-twenty spring, summer area sometime. About sixty people wanted to protest the masking of the town that the city council had thought of doing, and the sixty people that arrived at the parking lot there had a silent protest, you might say. A policeman of Moscow, Idaho, arrested one person. The reason for that was because he didn't like the guy. And the outcome of that was that he sued the city and won. Why is because the city overstepped the boundaries of their proprietary obligations of running the city. So, they had to fork out millions of dollars to pay for this guy who was wrongly arrested. And so, this comes down to what this all means is that I stand here because of God, not you. Okay? So, when I get harassed by police, these two people here, I don't like it very much.
Sir, your time is up.
So, next week.
The next speaker is Nancy Flores. Welcome. You can move the, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Nancy Flores. Soy la presidenta de la mesa directiva de Uniendo Voces de la comunidad de casas state colorado. En el, hoy vengo a representar a mi comunidad de casas prefabricadas que ha estado sufriendo de diferentes formas de intimidación por manejamiento. Hemos entrevistado a más de cien familias, las cuales veintitrés están siendo forzadas a arreglar sus yardas cuando en el contrato solo dice que debemos de mantener nuestras yardas en buenas condiciones y en algunos casos supera hasta los cuatro mil ochocientos dólares. Veintiún familias han sido víctimas de botas vehiculares sin tener aviso previo, el cual les da un costo de ciento sesenta y nueve dólares. Veintidós familias han tenido incrementación en sus biles de agua, lo que más nos inquieta en este momento es la calidad del agua, ya que tenemos data de que nos dicen que el sistema de filtración de agua estuvo apagado por más de un año, y nos gustaría mantener, asegura, que se aseguran que el agua de nuestro parque llene los requisitos pedidos por el estado. Gracias.
Hi, my name is Nancy Flores. I'm the president of HOA, Uniendo Voces de la comunidad Casas States. I'm here today to present, to represent my community of prefabricated mobile homes, which have been suffering from different forms of intimidation by management. We have interviewed a hundred families in which twenty-three of these families have been forced to fix their yards, when the contract states and regulations states that they have to maintain in good conditions. Some of the costs, it could go up to forty-eight hundred dollars. Twenty-one of these families have been victims of vehicle booting without having a previous notification, and each time that they get a boot, it costs a hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. Twenty-two of these families have been seeing increments in their water bill. One thing that worries us the most is that we have data that it says that the filtration system for the water has been off for about a year, and we would like to make sure that the water meets the state requirements.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gloria Gamboa. Welcome.
Ah, mi nombre es Gloria Gamboa. Vengo de Casa State. Mi caso es porque la manager me estuvo tratando de intimidar. Ella bloqueó mi cuenta para que yo no pudiera hacer el pago de mi renta, y nunca me notificaron de nada. Cuando yo fui a preguntar a la oficina que pagaba, que pasaba, me dijeron que yo estaba para desalojo. Nunca me mandaron una notificación ni aviso de nada. No fueron claras con lo que me estaban pidiendo, y me acusaron que yo era un peligro para la comunidad porque tenía una extensión de luz. Cuando me mandaron la notificación, la hoja, me estaban diciendo una versión muy diferente a lo que me dijeron en la oficina. Yo llevé un money order a la oficina para pagar mi renta, y no me lo quisieron recibir porque dijeron que yo ya estaba para desalojo. Después hablé con la abogada de ellos, y me dijeron que yo tenía... Yo les dije que tenía pruebas de que yo no era un peligro, y de que yo quería hacer el pago, y que no me estaban dejando hacerlo. Le dije a la abogada que yo tenía fotos de que todo lo que me estaban diciendo a mí no era verdad. A ella le dijeron que yo estaba negando me hacer el pago. Cuando, por fin se las mandé, ellos ya no quisieron seguir con el caso porque sabían que tenía pruebas, y ellas no tenían pruebas de lo que me estaban diciendo. Para mí fue mucho estrés, angustia, y ansiedad, lo que estaba pasando, solo porque ellas supusieron algo, sin tener pruebas, ni haberme notificado, ni preguntarme si era cierto. Dijeron que iban a estar inspeccionando mi casa, y es muy desagradable tener una manager de la cual uno se tenga que estar cuidando, en vez de vivir tranquilos en la comunidad, porque ella toma represalias.
I'll be translating again.
Okay, hold on real quick. Is it possible that we can restart the timer for the translation? Because I wanna make sure that the folks that are here that need a translator get to have their full three minutes. Is that something we can do? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. She says, "My name is Gloria Gamboa. Management has been trying to intimidate me. They blocked my account. I wasn't able to pay my rent. When I went to the office to ask what was going on, they told me that I was in the list of eviction. They never gave me a notification or nothing. They were not, they did not give me any clarity on why they were accusing me. They told me that I was danger to the community, just because they have an extension court outside. When they sent me the notification, they were saying, they were telling me a different version of what they told me in person. I took myself to take a money order to pay my rent, and they didn't wanna receive it. They kept reinstating that I was in the list of eviction. After I spoke with the lawyer for Casas States, and I told them that I had proof that I wasn't doing anything wrong, they asked for more evidence, then they were able to accept my rent. Then they told me that I, they kept reinstating that I didn't wanna pay my rent when I was the first one that I wanted to pay it. I took photos of my house and everything, inside and out, proving that my shed wasn't part of, that I wasn't giving any type of endangerment to the community coming out from my shed, because that's where they had the extension. The reason is she had an electrical lawnmower. She needed recharge. After they saw that, after they saw the evidence that I had, they did accept my payment with the notice from the lawyer. I went through stress, anxiety, just... All this happened just because they were never clear, they only had a suspicion, they never asked me what was going on. After the lawyer approved for me to pay, they told me that there were gonna be inspection in my house on a monthly basis. It's unfortunate to have a management that you have to be keeping yourself watching over your head because you don't live in peace, and she'll always take retaliation against.
Thank you. The next speaker is Moises Lagunaz. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you for listening. I'm here because I'm living in Casas States. We got any issues, I'm trying to sell my home, and the management right now, she wants me, she gives me a paper, which is means I don't deal with paperwork for the new owners who wanna buy my home. She wants me to give it to them to remove a concrete and a porch, which is mean, I got a permit from them to do it two years ago, and they don't have any on files, and I got a copy over here on me, and my papers over here, it doesn't say anything that I have to remove, my porch, or even my concrete. So, nobody wants to buy my home with problems with this new administration. So, like, right now, I'm in this situation, and I don't know what to do. So, like, all my dreams and everything is there, and my family, so it's part of my life, so I don't know what to do. The new management, she wants me to, like I say, she wants me to give it to the new owners of papers to sign down, which means like they have thirty days to remove the porch and the concrete, and this is not, I think it's not fair. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maria Barella. Welcome.
Buenas noches a todos. Quisiera agradecer a nos consejarles la oportunidad de presentarnos ante ustedes a hablar de nuestros problemas como residentes de Casas States. Me gustaría suplicarles que consideren la instalación de un semáforo en la calle de Huron Street y a Hundred and Thirty Second, ya que cruzar esas avenidas se ha convertido en una pesadilla para los residentes. Ha habido muchos automovilistas, accidentes automovilísticos en los últimos años, y los conductores utilizan esa calle casi como una pista de carreras, y es muy peligroso cruzar la calle Huron. Y si se pondría un semáforo ahí, se podrían salvar muchas vidas, no? Porque son muy frecuentes los accidentes en esa avenida. Y también me gustaría hablar del alumbrado en nuestra comunidad de Casas States. Está muy oscuro, y pues los rateros se aprovechan de eso para entrar a las casas en la noche y a robar.
I'm trying to rest, 'cause she doesn't have anything written. Her name is Maria Barella, and she thanks everyone who's here tonight for listening to her plea. She would like for, she has it in written. She would like to, for you guys to consider the installation of a traffic light on Hundred and Thirty Second and Huron Street, since there've been a lot of accidents, and the people use that street as a racing street. And it has become a nightmare. She also wanted to talk about lightning in Casas States community around it, since it's very dark, and people have been stealing from mobile, like residents from the mobile home community. And they keep breaking into houses at night. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Trakisha Armstrong. Welcome.
Hello, council member.
Hello, councilmembers of Westminster. My name is Trakisha Armstrong. I'm the mother of Torrance McCall, whose life was taken two years ago today. As a mother, it's been hard for me grieving over his loss when I feel Westminster has continued to treat him as a suspect, not a victim. It's also been a slap in the face that the city of Westminster has refused to even speak of my son's death. I'm here today asking for an independent investigation into my son's death and into the city, into, into the Westminster Police Department, also first responders and Jefferson County Coroner's Office. Also, I just want to also give you guys a brief because Torrance meant a lot to our family. He was sixteen at the time of his death. He would have been eighteen. And it's been hard for my family getting over this and grieving. Also, I continuously hear, you guys speak of Westminster as a community. Where was community when the life of a sixteen-year-old boy was taken? Where was community? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yadira Manriquez. Welcome.
Hello. Good night. I'm trying my English. My name is Yadira and I am a resident of Casa States number 257. We've been in the community for the last fifteen years. During these past years, we have, we have had several managers, but never like the one we have right now. We've been having so many problems with her. First thing, the water valve, she changed my water valve and she charged me $453, even that's their responsibility. Second, we have problems with the sewer line. They add a new sewer line and the sewer is broken my wall and she doesn't want to fix it. Onto the point that she is going into my house with her vendors. Even I'm telling her by email, "I need a notification, please, before you come with people that I don't know." And she's just saying, "Yes, I will let you know," but she does, she, she, she just doesn't listen. She keeps bringing people and, people, a lot of people in my home. Sometimes my kids are home alone. I thought they are old enough, but I feel not comfortable with that because there is men's inside my, my home. I will prefer to be notified by email every time she brings people to my home to fix the wall. We really feel intimidated with her all the time. We don't feel secure anymore. I don't let my kids go outside anymore because we don't feel secure. Even there is a lot of people breaking in the, the homes. There is not a lot of light around, so we really feel not safe in there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Centris McCall. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Centris McCall. I am Torrance McCall's sister. And losing my brother has been really hard for me and my family. And I feel like y'all Westminster people and Jeff, Jefferson County people are really not doing nothing about my brother's death. And that's not really sitting well with me. And it's going on his second anniversary for his death. And still nothing. And we talk about my brother all the time and... Yeah, I miss my brother. I've been in his life his whole entire, like, life and... Yeah.
Thank you. The next speaker is Juana Bendia. Welcome.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Juanita Badillo y también vivo en la comunidad de Casa State. Mi motivo de estar aquí es porque en los cinco años que tengo viviendo ahí se han cambiado las manager, pero no di, no quiero decir que las, las otras eran mejores, pero esta que ha llegado nos ha exigido muchas cosas que pues realmente en veces no, no es que nos exija sino que nos pide. Y a mí me ha pedido que arregle la yarda y que, también estoy aquí porque es el aumento de agua. Es un aumento de agua que en este año, en menos de tres meses, me ha subido mucho el agua. Y yo he escuchado con las demás vecinas que ellos todavía siguen pagando el agua a lo que yo pagaba antes. Entonces yo vengo a pedir esa, esa, que se nos escuche y que se ajusta con todos parejos. Y también antes nos rentaban el saloncito para hacer nuestras fiestas ahí para nuestros, nuestros hijos porque como es una comunidad de Casa State pasan los carros y es peligro para los niños. Ahora no nos quiere rentar el salón más que por cuatro horas y sigue ella, lo autoriza. Si estamos bien en récord con ella, no lo renta, o sea, no lo presta. Porque antes se hacían allí zumba y había clases de, para la comunidad y ya no permite nada de eso. Ya no nos deja dar clases, ya no nos deja hacer cosas para la comunidad, todo eso lo quitó. Y también estoy aquí porque eh, la manera de ella es una actitud que no, ni siquiera nos voltea a ver, nos ignora como que somos ignorados cuando vamos a la oficina con ella. Nos quiere como gritar, como ignorar y luego nos levanta la mano como diciendo, "No, no, no puedo escuchar nada. Todo tiene que ser por correo electrónico." Entonces yo quiero que por favor nos ayuden y nos apoyen a esta comunidad de Casa State. Gracias.
As she mentioned, her name is Juanita and she's here because she would like for you guys to listen and help this community. They've been asking her to fix her yard when she's unable to wait at the moment. They have increments of water bills. It has been a lot. The increment for her family especially has been a lot. She has talked to some of her neighbors and her neighbors have noted, keep paying the same amount that they were paying before, but her water keeps incrementing. She knows that through the five years that she has been living there, they have changed management several times. She's not saying that the other management, management was better, but this one keeps ignoring them. They don't listen to them. When they're going to talk to the office, she puts her hand up that she doesn't want to talk to them. It feels like there are no welcome there. They, they used to rent the clubhouse for classes, for zumba, even for little gatherings because the community is very small. So kids are outside and it could be a danger like by people driving by. If your mobile home isn't up to date or up to code, she will not rent it. It's her decision whether she would like to rent it or not. And if they, if you're okay for that amount, like amount of time, it's only rented for four hours before it used to be longer. And she would just like to thank, okay? She would just like to thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. The next speaking, speaker, sorry, is Josiah Moore. Welcome.
Welcome. Hello, councilors of First Minister. My name is Josiah. I'm the brother of Torrance McCall. His life was taken two years ago today. I, I'm here to tell you that, tell you what he meant to me. My family, he was a bright person. Such, such a talented person. So many, so, some of many things that were taken from me was the opportunity to have talks with my brother, even play catch and do sports with my brother. Also, I'll never get the chance to hug him or hear his voice again. The only thing that to keep that I have is memories that I've been taking, what keeps me going. It's been difficult being the only brother left. I'm here to asking for independent investigation into his death. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brandon Gerke. Welcome.
Thank you, council. I'm here to talk about Torrance McCall. My name's Brandon. Two years ago today, on October fourteenth, Torrance McCall, a sixteen-year-old black teenager, was killed during a high-speed car chase by Westminster PD. The claims that, that Torrance had committed suicide, yet there was no medical intervention performed on Torrance's death, either by the police or by first responders. And when Torrance was in the hospital, the family never was contacted by the coroner and never received consent to conduct an autopsy. Torrance's body was experimented on by, by the autopsy without the family's consent. And we continue to advocate and demand that there be an independent investigation on the police department, on the first responders and on the coroner's office. Because quite frankly, it's been two years and this family has not been able to grieve properly because of the inaction by the city council and by this administration. We, we fundamentally need change into how policing is done in our community and the community should have the power over how policing is done. That, that is why as a member of DAACAC, we advocate for community control over the police where the people are actually able to have power over how the chief of police is selected, not appointed by a city manager. And actual have independent investigations, unlike the critical incident response team, by actual civilians of the, of the community and not police investigating police. That is how things like this happen when there are police investigating police misconduct, when there are other officials that are not civilians investigating misconduct. We need the people to be actually, actually have power over their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Arnaldo Alvarado. Welcome.
Thank you. Mi nombre es Arnaldo Alvarado y también vengo de Casa State. Vivo en la 362. Eh, también quería que pues nos ayudaran, ¿verdad? Porque yo también conmigo están pasando cosas con la manager. Me está cobrando de más en el agua. He pagado hasta trescientos sesenta y dos por la pura agua. Eh, puse la, puse la falda nueva en la traila y ella pasó por ahí y me miró que la estaba poniendo nueva y nunca me dijo nada. Hasta cuando terminé de ponerla, me mandó un correo electrónico diciéndome que tenía que cambiar la falda, que tenía que poner, ponerla de material de vinil, que esa no era el material que tenía que poner cuando pues la mayoría de las trailas tienen material diferente, nada más con que sea para material adherido al, a la, a las trailas y quería que por favor nos ayudaran con eso.
My name is Arnaldo Alvarado. I'm a resident of Casa State as well. They have been charging me for water a lot. My highest bill has been a $329. I fixed the skirting of my mobile home. She passed by and she saw that it was fixed and everything was okay until a few days later. She sent me an email that the material that I used for my skirting in my mobile home was not approved by, by them. And they told me that I needed to put the new skirting by the material approved for them. He just wants for the help of you guys to help this community because for him, at least for his family, it has been really hard economically.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sabrina McKinney. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Sabrina and I'm a member of Denver Aurora Community Action Committee. On October twenty twenty-two, Torrance McCall, a sixteen-year-old black teenager, was shot in the back of the head by Westminster Police for driving a stolen car and Westminster Police declared it a suicide. Torrance was deprived of any chance at life. Torrance should still be alive. He did not deserve death. The Westminster Police demonstrated that property is more important and valuable than black life that night. If Torrance was white, he would have been treated differently and he would most likely still be here. We demand that there be an investigation into Torrance's death, including the Westminster Police, the first responders present that night and the Jefferson County Coroner that did an autopsy without the consent of the family. We also demand that everyone responsible for Torrance's death be held accountable. For far too long, Torrance's family has gone on without answers. They have been forced to live in the dark about what happened to their loved one. The least you can do is right this wrong and help heal this festering wound your city's officials caused. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carlos Padilla. Welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Juan Carlos Padilla y vengo del parqueadero de las Casas State. Igual nada más para exponer mi caso de que la manager entonces nos ha perjudicado en el sistema de que yo estoy pagando parqueadero para tres carros más y me han estado poniendo las botas y mi yarda igual quiere que la arregle yo, pero es grande, es muy grande y me mandó un papel y es, es que escrito que si no la arreglaba yo en cinco días, ella la iba a arreglar y me iban a cobrar cuatro mil ochocientos dólares. Gracias.
His name is Juan Carlos Padilla and he has come tonight to talk to you guys about the issue that he has with management. One is that he's paying for three cars for parking and he's still getting booted. He also has the issue about his yard. His yard's pretty big and she's requesting for him to do it within five days. If he doesn't fix his yard within five days, they will, their company of landscaping will go into his mobile home, fix the yard and that would cost $4,800. He hopes that you guys can help him out with this and thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alfredo Carbal. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Alfredo. I am part of the Denver Aurora Community Action Committee and I'm here talking about Torrance McCall. So it's been another year since Torrance's death, a youth of sixteen. Another year with no answers and no closure for the family. The family has to experience what no parent should ever have to. The loss of a child, a son, a brother and an uncle. This year he would have been an uncle, but now his niece will never get to know her uncle. There's no greater tragedy than that. But her family, but his family is still here. But her family, but his family is still here demanding answers. The police ruled it a suicide, but didn't bother to do forensics, didn't bother to back that up in any way. Autopsy done without consent. Coroner's report says the bullet wound, the entry point behind the head, it just doesn't add up. And it's disturbing that, you know, this isn't the first time Turquesha has had to come here to demand answers. And every time she comes here, she hears like people telling her, they don't know this hap- they don't know that this happened in their community, right? And I find that very disturbing and shameful. So I think the least the city can do is following through with an independent investigation into Torrance's death. I think that's the least you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Paul Nelson. Welcome.
Oh, thank you, counsel. I appreciate the time today to address you all. My name is Paul Nelson, and I am also a member of the DAACAC here. We're a chapter of the National Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression, and we've come here to speak out against what's happening and to lift up this family's demands. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what's already been said, but it's been a real dark two years for this family. Like, I can't even imagine personally what it would be like, but I want you all to think about what's been said by the other speakers. If you're in the audience, do think about it. But can you imagine what it would be like if this happened to someone in your family? What it would be like to have their killing be ruled a suicide after their shot here? And then their hands aren't checked for any gunpowder or any residue, and so the most, you know, that's a thing that would have proved that. They neglected to do that. And the idea that someone would perform an autopsy on your family member, can you imagine such a thing without talking to you, especially if it's your child? This this isn't something you have to imagine. This is something that actually happened to the family behind us. And the very least we could do for this dark and wretched situation is shed some light on it, you know? Like closure for this family, you know? And that light's not going to be coming from the police department. It's closed investigation. We looked into it ourselves, declared ourselves innocent. That's not going to happen. What this family and this community needs and this community deserves is an independent investigation of the Westminster Police Department first and foremost, but also the first responders that showed up that night of Torrance's death and didn't provide medical care. There needs to be an investigation into that hospital and the Jefferson County Coroner. What's what's the transition between these places in which the thought to call his family was never considered? That needs to be answered, too. Y'all should really think about what it might be like if this were to happen to you, and you should act as though it happened to you with some empathy and some concern for people in our community here. And I would just like to put the rest of my time as a moment of silence for Torrance McCall, who should definitely still be alive today, but is not.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bruce Baker. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I appreciate the counsel. I appreciate the time. And I'm moved by the comments already that government owes its citizens absolute trust and confidence. And so I would certainly appeal to this council to listen to the request for an independent audit. I think that's only the least this council could do. And also, it's terrible to see people in compromised economic positions get gouged by a landlord. That thing is pretty bad. I'm just here about money. This council is the steward of the money of Westminster. And on item ten B, you want this city and WEDA, which you are the WEDA Board, you want you to take a secured loan for $2 million and transform it into an unsecured loan for $2.5 million? That's crazy. Why would you go from a secured position of a banker to an unsecured position? That makes no sense. But worse still is that you were getting paid 5% interest, and you wanted it to be for 2.5% interest? So let me see, you're going to charge a lower interest rate on a more risky loan? And where are the financials? I mean, if if we're going to be bankers, where are the financials? Have you seen the financials for this property? Are they making money? Do they have the ability to repay? Or when this whole operation goes bankrupt? And you're owned money by an LLC. Remember, LLC stands for limited liability company. So if they go bankrupt, you get nothing. $2 million, down the dumper. I had to look up when I read the thing. I had to look up what the heck is a surplus pledge agreement? Did any of you know what that was before you looked it up, or I hope you looked it up? Did you know what a negative pledge agreement is? I certainly didn't. This is bizarre, absolutely bizarre. Please don't do this. That's not good stewardship of the public's money. If that apartment complex is in tough financial times, let it fall bankrupt. Let it fall bankrupt. Do not give it more money. We have already, as a city, given it millions of dollars, like $11 million? So I see my three minutes is up, so thanks for playing.
Thank you. Well, the next speaker is Karen Calaviti. Welcome.
Hello. Yeah, I remember seeing the group of people who are here tonight last meeting, and I was curious. I thought it might be the Greenbrier Mobile Home Park involved, but it's it's another situation. But I do know that these hedge fund operators are buying up mobile home parks, and I don't know if that's the situation with the Casa Estates or not. But I also know that some of the corporations are getting good deals while the people in the in the situations are getting raw deals. And I I I'm still a little unclear what's happening with the Casa Estates. But I do know that in general, people like Varday Investment, they keep getting exceptions and deals with the city, and and they're they're kind of ruining the city. And it just seems like there should be some safeguards in place when there's hedge fund management companies taking over some of these these properties, that they are being watched carefully, and the residents are being protected, and not just us as a city keep on giving out subsidies for new construction of affordable housing.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michelle Shane. Show in. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Shown, and I'm a resident of Casa Estates. I live in Lot 118. We've been there a little over three years. We are constantly harassed by the new management. There is nothing that you can do to actually be in compliance with her rules, because she changes the rules on a regular basis. They change the pricing of water on a regular basis without notice. They lie to our faces. I sent a very long email to Counselor Obi explaining a large list of things that they have been doing to our residents. We really feel attacked by this current management, and we're looking for any help that we can get. It's exhausting. It's costing us money that most of us don't have in the first place. I mean, we live in a mobile home because that's an affordable housing. It's the last affordable housing in the Denver metro area. The company that owns us, Kingsley Management, is part of the price fixing scheme that Mr. Weiser is currently working on. We're in trouble. We're we're just, we're dying. People are getting evicted for no reason. We are, we currently have twenty houses for sale in the neighborhood at this time of year. That's unheard of. This is a time of year when we're usually very stable. We have kids in school. People don't usually sell until May. We have a lot of houses going up for sale, and more are coming. So we're just looking for any help that you guys might be able to help us with. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Guthrie. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, esteemed councilors. My name is Andrew Guthrie. I am the co-chair of the Westy Dog Park Guardians. You haven't heard a lot about the dog park lately, so I thought I'd give you a quick little update. First of all, on September twelfth, we had a wonderful meeting with the Parks Department, had some great conversations. Out of that actually came the adopting of the park. Think about it as like the Adopt a Street program. So the guardians are now the official guardians of the park. So we we adopted that, and upon announcing that, we actually had some of our followers use their volunteer hours from their work to want to come out and actually clean up the dog park. So a little shout out to Yes Communities for for that volunteer opportunity. And that's just one example of how our our partnership can can really work well. We are currently working with the Westminster Community Foundation about a fiscal sponsorship agreement. That's currently in the works, and with that, our goal is to be able to fundraise and help raise awareness for the Westminster Community Foundation. Apparently, a lot of people like dogs, so we kind of have an in with a lot of people. So that that's an opportunity to really help raise the community foundation's profile. We've already gotten some great in-kind donations from places like Lowe's. We got some free buckets from them, some gift cards from Starbucks. So we we have a great opportunity here to to really work together and help help this wonderful resource that we have. I'd just like to close out with a couple of upcoming events. First of all, you know, with adopting the park, there are going to be nice little signs that say, "Adopted by the Westy Dog Park Guardians." We're going to have a small sign dedication ceremony that everyone's invited to. We're we're working on a date for that. Need to actually have signs up to be able to dedicate them, so we're working on that. And then we're going to have our inaugural pup party, pick-up poop party. And that's going to be October twenty-sixth. Everyone's welcome to that as well. And with more information on that, I'm going to yield my time to my colleague, Beth. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth McBride. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. My name is Beth McBride, and I'm a member of the Guardians. And since you all voted on the park, we would like to thank you very much for that. And we're trying to earn your vote by assuring that we're maintaining and taking care of the park. I want to tell you about our first event that we're going to have. And it's Cleanup Day on the twenty-sixth of October from eight to twelve. Last Sunday morning, there were a group of us that were out at the entrance, two entrances of the park, and we were taking names of people that were interested, and we got twenty-six names in a matter of an hour. So it was really nice, and these are people from all over the county, the area. And on the twenty-six, people will sign up attendance sheets. They will be logging in volunteer hours for the for the community and the city. They'll sign waiver forms and get supplies provided by the city, such as bags, pooper scoopers, and buckets and snake gators. You'd need those now. Upon signing in, each person will receive a smaller version of the sticker. Now, what I've included in the first thing is the invitation that was done by Susan Herple, who's a former retired now professional photographer, and she designed this and set this up. My sticker looks huge. It's not that large, obviously, for in your packet. It's not going to be this big. It's going to be only about three, four inches. But as people check in, then this is a way we can do attendance, too. The next thing I want to show you is is a temporary map that was designed by Cindy Stop and Sherri Griffin, who spent a lot of their own time. And this is a beautiful map. We have no trails marked. We have no, up to this point, we have no distances. So people didn't know where they were, or you'd say, oh, it's just over there. And one of the reasons that they did this, and you'll notice, too, that they've even included two legends, color-coded everything, and so this is just really a wonderful thing. But it also means if somebody falls or gets injured, we can be able to locate them. They can, you know, call on their phone, tell exactly where they are. If a dog or a person is bitten by a snake, which could be a reality, has happened, authorities will be able to reach them and quickly, so can take care of them. If someone is wanting to walk, but they're not sure how whether, how far they can walk, or if they have the ability, they can now see the distance on the trails on the on there, and they can make a decision about where they want to walk. It also is going to help us in cleaning up, because as we go around, and we are, the volunteers are going around to see where the areas that might need picking up trash or also poop, we can identify that. Volunteers contributed, like Sandy Lane, in working with technology with a HubSpot, and she's got signup genius to get our people to sign up and schedule volunteers.
And your time is up.
Okay. Well, I just want to invite you to it, and I hope you understand that we want to preserve the park and keep it looking good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Farb. The next speaker is Diana Moore. Welcome.
Hello, counsel. Hello, Mayor. My name is Diana Moore. I am the older sister of Torrance McCall. Today marks two years since the incident that resulted in the in my sixteen-year-old brother's death. No child or young adult should have to look at their sibling in a casket before they reach adulthood. My brother is missing out on so much things. He is missing out on his niece that I know he would love so much. He's, he missed out on prom, graduation, and so many other things that a normal teenager should have experienced. My daughter shouldn't have to know her uncle through pictures and videos, and it sucks that that's the way that it has to be now. I feel such a loss without my brother. My brother was such a goofy boy. He loved to make people laugh and smile. He loved to make tacos and milkshakes in the kitchen and make big messes. He loved babies and wanted a family of his own. He was a kid. As his big sister, I would like an independent investigation for my brother's death. My family needs answers, and we need it now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. I know that the mayor has tabled 10A, the budget, but I would like people in this community to actually look at that budget. It is very long, but you'll find a bunch of frivolous and wasteful spending in there left and right. A lot of that money could be better sourced for our core services instead of some of this frivolous stuff. So I'm hoping the community actually takes the next two weeks to look over those documents and make comment to this council regarding the budget. Now, in reviewing it, one of my biggest red flags was that the city's staff is recommending putting money aside for Pride Festival. Now, let me preface, I don't have a problem with the Pride Festival. Denver has one, Adams County has one. But I for one believe that the citizens of this city do not want to pay for that out of their tax dollars. Could again be better spent on core services. Police department, fire department, streets. Those are the important things. And by doing this, if we go with this, what's next? You're opening the door for God knows what festival. I mean, if we're going to do that, then let's put a request in for an Indigenous People Festival. I guess that would have taken place today or this weekend. We can't do this. We can't have a festival for everybody. Then the Hmong people are going to come and want a festival that the city is going to be respected, be expected to pay for? It's got to stop. The needs of a few don't outweigh the needs of the many in this city. And again, the needs of the few, the needs of the 115,000-plus people of this city. You are responsible for our tax dollars. Let's use them wisely. And again, I'm not against a Pride Festival. I want to make that fully clear. What I'm against and what most of the people I've talked to about this are against is their tax dollars being used for this type of activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Amira Assad-Lucas.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I was here a little over a month ago sharing about, oh, first off, sorry, Amira Assad-Lucas and a Vice President of Adams 12 Board of Education. I was here a little over a month ago sharing about our two measures that we have on the ballot. And a bond and mill, 5D and 5E is how it will be listed. And I shared that these measures will cover compensation for educators, increasing room and capacity in our career and technical education programming, and then expanding on those programs as well. Along with increasing or advancing security within our schools, building maintenance, so we don't have to continue deferring maintenance. And one of our bigger ones is rebuilding Thornton High School to help the community. So we have had, we have been at all, our five municipal city councils. And Northland's the last one who will be unanimously supporting it tonight. All of our other city councils, Federal Heights, City of Thornton, Northland and Brumfield have all unanimously supported it. So we are asking for your support as well. And one thing that when we, when I was presenting at City of Thornton, Mayor Coleman really stressed the importance of investing in our schools because strong schools equal strong communities. So I'm asking for your support as well and to share her sentiment and along with our other city councils within our cities. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. It's good to see all you all again. I'm Tom Lambo. I'm here to lift up the community of Westminster in prayer. Please join me in prayer. God in Jesus' name, we ask that you be with us. We invite you here to Westminster. You are, you are always welcome wherever we are. Heavenly Father, you are the God of creation. There is no God above you. You rule and reign in all situations. You have never been defeated and you never will be. You are victorious over all situations. In Psalm 24:1, it states, "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it, the world and all who live in it." Nothing escapes you. No man can hide from you. There is nothing we do that you aren't aware of, and you still love us. Father, we are all at different places in our faith. You created us all and we are all here for this time. All we need to do is let you guide us through all situations. Revelations 3:20, it states, "Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If anyone hears my voice and opens the door, I will come into him and will dine with him and he with me." You are a loving God and you will not trample on our decisions. You always knock. Send your Spirit to work within us so we will let you in. You are, you are our God and we are your people. In your precious name we pray. Amen. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gabby Chavez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to come up here and talk to you guys about the ballot measures, 5E, 5D, and 4C, which you guys have heard about, I know. And I just want to advocate for you guys to support this. I did not attend either one of these school districts, but I did graduate from 27J recently. And 27J did not pass a mill levy the entire time that I was in the school district, which is really hard to not be invested in as a student. And I get to see the effects of that as I'm in college now and I get to go to school with other Colorado students who graduated from other school districts. And I just think it's really important to invest in our students. Like our board member said, strong, strong schools make strong communities. You're directly supporting your talent. You're supporting jobs in your community. And, you know, this is for a good thing. Our schools are sliding off hills in Thornton High School and our teachers aren't getting paid enough, especially with all the things that they are being asked to handle. And the access to career and technical education is so important for each and every student. And so we want to make that accessible. And I know that it's a lot to ask for community members to add more taxes onto what they already pay. I know that it's not cheap to live in everyday life. But it is important. And with a lot of the decisions that were made earlier at the Capitol, it should offset. So there's really no reason to not support our students and not to show them that we care about them and care about their future because they are our future. And we want them to be able to stay and live in these areas. But we can't do that if we don't get the resources and invest in our students. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That was the final speaker.
That brings us to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report tonight. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda, I would like to review what that is. We have had a change to that, which I'll highlight in just a moment. There are two information-only items, Business Appreciation Month and Business Support Activities. That's the first one. The second one is the Westminster Housing Authority Budget Update. So those are included in the public, publicly available packet. We did just have our two proclamations. There are six consent agenda items tonight, the first of which has been removed from consent and will be addressed separately. That's the first of the six consent agenda items. Next will be the Public Meeting and Certification in support of the City of Westminster's application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. That's a public hearing. There are 15 new business and/or public hearing items tonight in three categories. First reading of the city's 2025 budget. That is the item that is now for the public's information. That will be addressed next Monday on the 21st in special meeting, so that one will not be happening. We have a public hearing regarding the City of Westminster General Improvement Districts, or GID, 2025 budgets and mill levies. We also have a public hearing regarding the 2025 Proposed Westminster Economic Development Authority, or WIDA, budget. There are no second readings tonight and no post-meeting tonight. Next slide, please. This is a city update, a reminder and an announcement for everybody that October is Fire Prevention Month. And the theme this year is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. The Fire Department is hosting smoke alarm safety booths at Westminster Recreation Centers. And so you can drop in on any of our centers to, to get some more information. In the event of, this is a public service announcement part of the evening. In the event of a fire, you may have less than two minutes to escape safely once a smoke alarm sounds. So having working smoke alarms gives you an early warning, increases your chances of getting out quickly and safely. Next slide, please. So this week highlights what's happening this week, Tuesday, October 15th. So tomorrow, there's the open house at the Westminster, sorry, regarding the Westminster Boulevard Drinking Water Project that starts at 6:00 and goes to 8:00 PM at the City Park Recreation Center. On Wednesday night this week, the 16th, is a Special Permits and License Board Meeting that starts at 6:00 PM right here in City Council Chambers and goes to 7:30. And then on Saturday, of course, the big event of the year for the city on October 19th is Westy Fest. And that begins at noon and goes all the way till 8:00 PM at City Park. Next slide, please. For next week, this is now two meetings next week. The first of which is our regularly scheduled City Council Study Session. And that will begin at 6:30 right here in the City Council Chambers. Has two items on it, Presentation of the Unified Development Code, or UDC. Second is the Legislative Policy and Lobbying Protocols. Presentation and discussion and direction from City Council on your lobbying and legislative policy protocols. And then, of course, the special meeting on the city's 2025 budget. Next slide, please. You can contact me directly with my direct phone, 303-658-2003, or jandrews@westminsterco.gov. You can also follow the city at any one of our four social media sites, Facebook, Instagram, X, or Nextdoor. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Any questions? Counselor Demont?
I actually just had a quick question for you, Manager Andrews, about some of the speakers. I'm, I'm assuming staff is going to follow up with them. And I know that some years ago, we approved legal services for the specific, very specific reason that we heard about over and over tonight. So I just want to make sure that is whatever communication you have with those folks, that they are made aware of those services that we provide.
Counselor, thank you. We have already reached out and begun that communication, helping the residents gain access to Colorado legal services specifically related to tenant and landlord issues. And the city does contribute funding to Colorado legal services for that purpose. So we're encouraging the residents affected to take advantage of that service. There is a host of services, including in-person services that are provided. Adams County also does provide some services and we've sent that information to them. But we will continue to follow up. There was another, one of the speakers talked about water quality and concerns about water quality. And it is a requirement that water is tested monthly. And the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment reviews those test results. And we understand and have been advised that the September results were, they passed. And so those will be monitored monthly moving forward. And we will be getting the results of those tests as well to make sure that those, that those results are reported and understood.
Great. And my last ask is with so many new council members, it might be timely for us to hear about our rental program as well as that program that you just mentioned. Because I don't think that we went through that with the new council. So it would be a good education moment for us.
I'd just also like to ask, since Nancy was here, that was the president of the HOA, did we send the information that I saw in Spanish too? So that she could get it out either both ways, in English and in Spanish? So people can read the Spanish one and know how to access?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll make sure that that information is followed up with a full Spanish translation.
And then the only other thing I heard was sewer. Do we know what's going on with that sewer? There was water and there was somebody that mentioned sewer.
Mayor, we'll have to have a, a look at what those sewer issues are. It may be the, on the property connections. Because if I recall correctly, a lot of those references related to the landlord and, and actions. If it's related to the city sewer system, of course, we're already on it. But we'll have a double check on that.
Perfect, thanks. Any other questions, Counselor Azadi?
Just to add on to that, City Manager, I heard lighting, there are lighting issues and traffic light on the Speedway. Because that is a, that, they are correct, that, that is used as a racing street right now. So if we can do something about that too. And my second question is related to if, Deputy Manager Door. So Bruce Baker asked a question around the negative pledge agreement. I personally understand what this means, but this is a good moment. If you can come up and explain for the public what that is, why it's important and why the commercial real estate market is needing this due to these lender requirements that are putting these into place?
Counselor, Mayor, if I could, we do have that item on the agenda later this evening. And we do have a, a brief presentation planned by our, our Director of Community Services, Lindsay Kimball. And she will make sure to address what, what that is.
Counselor Ireland?
So I appreciate everyone that came out. I want to give kudos to the Guardians for taking proactive steps to help lower the cost of maintaining the dog park. And I appreciate the stepping up and hopefully helping taxpayers not pay so much to upkeep the dog park and keep it nice. Also, I appreciate those from Casa Estates coming forward and letting us know what is going there, on there. I would like to know if there's been a change of ownership there? Who is exactly owning the place? Why the rules are changing? If they're written and these people have signed it? Because when you buy a property, you agree to certain HOA covenants. And so they can't arbitrarily change those without the vote of the people. And I also know the state has made a law that any covenant that is broken, homeowner should not have to pay more than $400 for any covenant they break. So there is not much teeth in covenants anymore in HOAs. So the fact that they're, they're strong-arming these people, there is a problem. And they're breaking some laws, I believe. I also feel sorry for Terrence's family. I know the loss of a child can't, there's nothing worse. And I hope they can get some closure. And I know that we've heard from the police what happened there. But somehow, I hope we can give the family some closure there. And I appreciate Bruce Baker coming and explaining to us further what these kind of loans are. Basically, we're not getting a deed of trust. It's an unsecure loan. The taxpayers could lose all the money that is given to this developer. So I don't think, I am not voting for this, I'll tell you that right now because I'm here to represent the citizens and not the developers that are trying to take money from the hard-working taxpayers of the city. So that's my comments for night. Thank you.
Counselor Azadi?
Mayor, we are in Council Comments right now, correct?
No, we're under City Manager.
Okay, I, I can wait.
Anything else for the City Manager? Counselor Azadi, City Council of Commons?
Thank you for everyone who came out tonight. If you hear my voice, I'm a little sick, so apologies in advance. But first, I wanted to speak to Torrance McCall's family and friends who were here. It is very heartbreaking. I have a 10-year-old daughter and I cannot even begin to imagine what that feels like to lose her at 16. I'm sorry for your loss. And I'm just really sorry that, of what you're going through. Second, the Casa Estates folks for, for coming out, thank you. It may feel like you're voiceless, you know, and you don't have much power. But at least you can know you can come to us and get your voice heard, right? Now, we, we can't do everything. It's not in our jurisdiction to handle a lot of the issues that you came with. It's not in our jurisdiction to handle a lot of the issues that you came with, you know, but I hope the email last week helped. You saw the response from City Manager Andrews. And to my understanding, that was just the first of, I think a second one is coming. They're still gathering more research for you. But for the other issues you have, you've heard already. There's Colorado Legal Services, right? City Manager hooked you up with county resources related to personal legal assistance. That's going to be important, because many of the issues that you came with us with needs to be handled on a legal basis. But there are resources, and I hope those contacts that were given, you're using them. And especially when it comes to, so for the non-emergency PD number, we gave you that because of your unhoused issues and your, the drug dealing issues that you're dealing with. You need to call directly. When you see it happen, give them, give the police as much details as you can. So that's what you can do there. But for all these other issues, I'm hoping we can do something, traffic lights, lighting. I don't know what we can do with the water bill, because that seems to be in the domain of the landlord who is raising this without your consent and/or notice. But the broken sewer line and those sorts of things, please continue to reach out to us so we can reach, so we can do something about that. And I'm sorry of what you're going through. Related to BNSF, the resident who talked about the code enforcement that we need for the weeds there, I'm sure City Manager, you're on that, related to seeing what we can do for it in terms of code enforcement. And I did like the comment on podium height. I was curious about that, if it was blocking you guys, if it was too high. So thanks for bringing that up. I don't know what the solution is there, but it is nice to be able to see two ways. So thanks for that.
Counselor Ireland? Sorry. Counselor Ha?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank everyone who came out tonight. And I want to thank those from Casa Estates for coming and letting us know what's going on. It's so important, because a lot of times, we don't know about these issues until the community comes to us and lets us know. And so if you don't get the information, I know that you're working with the City Manager, if you don't get the information that you need or you continue to have issues, please continue to come and talk to us so we can get this figured out, because what you're going through is obviously not okay. Unfortunately, this is something that we're seeing happen in Colorado, where these companies, out-of-state companies come in and they buy these properties, and they totally take advantage of the residents. And it's not okay. And so if you don't get what you need, please keep coming back. And then I would also like to speak about Terrence McCall. As a mom, I can't even imagine, that's, losing a child, I think, is really one of the worst things that could ever happen. And I just want to say, this is why I have been asking for, this particular situation is why I've been asking the Police Department to look into dash cams for transparency for situations like this. If we had, if we would have had dash cams in this situation, we would have seen firsthand, there would have been video evidence firsthand of what exactly happened. And while we can't go back and have that for this mother, we can do what we can to make sure that there's never another parent who's in a situation where they can't get the closure. Because had, had there been physical video evidence, then I do think that that mother would be able to know exactly what happened to her son and be able to, you know, grieve properly. So I just want to say, I think any transparency, any way we can increase transparency is good. And I think dash cams both protect our residents and our officers, especially in these type of situations. And that is all for tonight, thank you very much.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you so much. There is a couple items I missed in my update earlier that I would be good to add here. So I just wanted to also add that tomorrow is our Drinking Water Facility Project Open House. It's six to eight at City Park Rec Center, and I encourage folks to attend that. So just giving an update there. And then we mentioned Fire Prevention Month several times this evening, and this does not come from the department, this does not come from council, this comes from me personally. But I just saw an update from a friend yesterday who used a fire blanket, and it possibly saved their house. And I plan on buying one. I encourage everyone I know to buy one. I'm going to be gifting them at Christmas. And so I just want to say, for Fire Prevention Month, you know, I encourage having what you need on hand, and I will be buying a fire blanket to make sure that I have it in the case of emergency. So just mentioning that there. And then I just wanted to mention also, a big shout out to Gary Bland, who's been a very dedicated resident for all of his work on ensuring that we have tennis facilities available in our city. He really put on an excellent job Saturday morning. And so a big thank you to him, and that, it just goes to show what residents can do when they're dedicated. And I wanted to give as well a major shout out to the former Adams student that's sitting here for coming up and speaking on behalf of the Adams Mill Levis. I often hear from leadership, and thank you for being here, but I often hear from leadership, top down, on the reasons why we need specific resources. But it is so rare that I hear from students themselves telling that, telling us what helps, and there's possibly no better argument to me than hearing directly from a student what could have helped them at the time. So that is really encouraging to see you here, and it's the first time I've ever seen that. So big thank you there. I think it's amazing. I also just want to say, in the best way that I can, muchas gracias a todos los oradores de Casa Estates. Gracias por informarnos sobre esto. Hacemos lo que podamos para ayudar. Además, intentare conseguir cervecerías de traducción aquí. And we've already said it, I know that our City Manager is following up the best that he can to follow up on those emails to see what services we can get to them, to help them out. And I've already sent an email, and so I know that our City Councilors here will see that. But I'm really hoping that we can get some sort of translation services here to help make tonight a little bit smoother in the future.
Counselor Demont?
Before I make my comments, one quick question. I thought that we did have translator services if they contacted the city. I don't know if the translator tonight was provided by us, but don't we have, in the past, we've provided translation services?
We do have translation services, just because of the, we were not contacted, but if they contact us the day before, even if they contact us an hour before we try to get someone here, we ask for 24 hours, but we try very hard, no matter how much lead time they give us.
And I assume that we share that information when people come in, so that next time they show up, that maybe they can benefit.
Yes, and it is also posted with the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Couple comments tonight. One, I think, thank you, everybody who came out. Two, it's always satisfying when we actually get to see some things that we've put in place be useful, and I mean that in the legal services. So I was on council, gosh, this is probably, first year I was on council, and Counselor Emma Pinner brought that forward. And I remember it specifically, because at first I wasn't on board with it, because they were just going to do an AdCo. And my ask was, if we're going to do it, it needs to be for all the residents of Westminster. And so we ended up striking a deal and being able to provide that for anybody in low-income situation that would be able to benefit from those, so that they don't end up subject to predatory landlords. So I hope that those services serve this group well, and I know that our staff will continue to look at the other issues and figure out what we can do for it. Next thing I want to bring up is this week is my, it's the third Thursday, so I will be doing my Cocapelli Town Hall, Policy in Pilsner, anybody is welcome. Will be there from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. And it's just an opportunity to meet with community members and myself, and sometimes other council members, and just hang out and break bread together and talk about things Westminster, or quite frankly, anything you want to talk about. And then a couple other things, I too wanted to thank Gary Bland for, there was a ribbon cutting for the Kingsmill Tennis Courts that he was a big advocate for. He also honored Mayor McNally and her late grandson Shay McNally, who, if you got to meet him like I did, he was a beautiful soul. So I thought that was really neat that Gary did that for the family, and Shay's parents were there as well. And then lastly, I want to again congratulate the Police Department. We had their award ceremony. The Mayor and I, City Manager Andrews and Deputy Manager Opie were all there to celebrate our brave men and women at the Police Department, some sworn, some unworn. It was a great night to get to hear the different heroic things that our Police Department does to keep our community safe. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to go out and honor those folks. And that, those are my comments.
Thanks. That brings us to Consent Agenda, and we have a request to remove Item A from the list, but do I have a motion for Items 8B as envoy through F to approve Consent Agenda? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8B through F.
I second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve Items 8B through F. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 28 regarding City Council's support position on Westminster Public Schools Ballot Issue 4C.
Counselor Carmelia?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 28 regarding City Council's support position on Westminster Public Schools. Counselor Ireland?
I am not voting for this. I've had constituents tell me that they've had enough taxes. We're asking for sales tax. I think the county's asking for a sales tax in Grease and Adams County, as well as our city for the fire. The state probably has some, I haven't seen the ballot totally. Our citizens are in economic stress in their own homes, and so I cannot put my support behind more taxes. I think city, state, school districts all need to look at their budgets and see ways to cut costs so that the citizens are not bearing the brunt of all these taxes. And that's my statement for tonight, thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Similar but different. I am actually not going to support any of these tonight, and it's not because I necessarily don't support the initiatives. I think that the state and the residents are being asked to support a lot of different competing initiatives. The City Council majority made the decision not to support our fire initiative, which I think our fire department has proven, you know, that there is a need for the tax dollars. So I'm not saying don't vote for it, but what I'm saying is I'm going to stay neutral, and so I can't support this if I'm not going to support the other ones. I think that what I would recommend is folks really think about what you want to spend your tax dollars on, because there is no shortage of asks this year. And like Counselor Ireland mentioned, people are hurting, there's, the costs keep going up. If you go to the grocery store, it seems like it's more expensive every time you show up every two weeks. So I'm not going to be supporting these. But again, I would ask folks to be educated. Education is certainly important, so are all the other ones that we decided not to take a position on. So I'd rather stay out of it.
Counselor Carmelia?
I'll say that we do have a lot of asks this year, and they're, I would say, not necessarily competing asks, because if we want to invest in the betterment of our community, we have to invest in ourselves. And if we want a successful community around us, and if we want healthy, social constituents, especially ones that vote and participate in all the critical civil issues that we ask them to, then we need to invest in our schools, and we need to invest in our students. So I think that, I think that it speaks volumes that this passed unanimously in every other city that it was taken to.
Counselor Zadi?
Yeah, I just want to say that I personally support these. I think everyone should vote for these. These are very important, the schools, our schools are critical. And I also support the fire one. Everyone should support fire and vote for that, and vote for wards, because representation is a good thing. So I support all of them, and that's my stance.
To the public that's listening, because we lost most of our public here, I just want to remind folks how school districts can get money. And it's either from the state, or it's going for a bond, which can only be used for capital improvement things. It cannot go into the general fund. A mill levy goes into the general fund, and that goes ongoing. A capital improvement bond ends at some point. And that's the reason you read in some of the language in some of the districts, they have some of their bonds ending. So what people are already paying in property tax will just be extended in this new bond. Education is critical, because I sat on a school board, and I know this is the only way you can ask for money. I know you have to go over your budgets and scrape out anything that you can so you can make things go. But to the public, you have to understand, this is the only way that they can receive money, and you have to understand, it's going to show up on your property tax. It isn't us doing it. I pay $69 to the city for my property tax. I pay over $2,000 to Jeffco Schools for their bonds and their mill levies. So understand what you're paying in your property tax, and get educated in that, understand it, and then vote however you're going to vote. But I want people to understand, I will be supporting these only because I did sit on a school board. I know it's the only way that you can ask for money, and it is up to the citizens to know what they can and can't afford. So thanks for being here tonight. Roll call, please.
I think, because they were polled, we probably should take them individually. There are three separate resolutions.
I have, oh, I thought we have, 28 is on the table.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Counselor Demont?
No.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 4-2 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 29. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 29 regarding Adams 12 Five-Star School Ballot Issue 5D in resolution.
Counselor Carmelia?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 29. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha? Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
No.
The motion passes on a 4-2 vote.
That brings us to Resolution Number 30. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 30 regarding Adams 12 Five-Star School Ballot Issue 5E.
Counselor Carmelia?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Resolution Number 30. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont? And Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 4-2 vote.
That brings us to our first public hearing. I will open the hearing if there's anyone, did anybody sign up?
Nobody signed up.
Okay, it is to approve the city's application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and certify support for this program. Seeing no one that signed up for this public hearing, I will close the public hearing, and we have a motion. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the city's application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and certify support for this program.
Counselor Zadi?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the city's application to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Hatt?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
And in case you came in late into our meeting virtually, the, to item ten A is going to be a special meeting, and it's been tabled to October twenty-first. We will have our two study session items and then have a special meeting. So that brings us to the first reading of Counselors' Bill Number Thirty-four for item B. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass the first reading of Counselor Bill Number Thirty-four amending Aspire Project Finance and Development Agreements between the City of Westminster and Sherman Associates, Inc., and releasing the subordinate deed of trust on the Aspire Project.
Counselor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Thirty-four. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I think this is the one that I had asked the question earlier today, so I think staff was...
Sorry, I didn't see you're standing in the wait. Come forward, all of you.
Mayor, I did ask...
I was just on a mission.
Thank you. I did ask that Director Lindsay Kimball do provide an overview of this package, particularly in light of some of the questions raised and some of the questions about a couple of the instruments involved.
Welcome.
And counselors, thank you, Lindsay Kimball, Community Services Director. Want to give you a quick overview of this. I was monitoring the meeting, and some great questions came up regarding these agreements and what we are trying to do with this refinancing for the Aspire Project. So as you know, the Aspire Project is an eighty-five million dollar project in our downtown. It's been very successful, like most projects in our large development projects. Excuse me. It goes through a cycle of financing from a construction loan first that has been satisfied. It was refinanced into another loan called a mezzanine or a bridge loan, which is where they are right now. And once the project is what we call stabilized, so has the majority of tenants in place, has a stable flow of income coming from the renters and the residential, they move to what's called a permanent loan. And that's the point where we are now. Since the project obtained its mezzanine financing, in which the city and Wida hold a note that holds a secured interest in the property for repayment of our note, what has changed is the financial markets. So they aren't able to get a lender willing to agree to take a loan or provide a loan with a secondary deed of trust. They're not preferred anymore in this market. So what we did, we spent a lot of time with the developer and their financial team, and we worked on putting together an alternative that would satisfy both the need for a secured interest. So it is secured, and what it's secured by is an interest in the actual company, the business. How is it guaranteed? It's guaranteed in the same way that the original note was secured and guaranteed. So it's guaranteed by a personal guarantee as well as a corporate guarantee. So while we don't have a deed of trust, which is like a second mortgage on the property, what we do have is a secured interest in the business, which is why, and it is complicated, so I understand there's questions, certainly. It's not something that we would do as average citizens every day. So we have a negative pledge agreement. So what that means, very simply, that is an instrument so that Sherman, the person that we have lent the two million dollars to that is owed back to the city with interest, very simply, it is a pledge that they will not take on any additional debt, nor make any additional calls on the property or the interest from which we would be repaid. So that's a protection for us. Has kind of a scary name, negative pledge, and it's not a common instrument that we would use, you know, as, you know, if you're buying a home or something like that, or investing in a business, but with large-scale projects in corporate entities, it is a common instrument. So again, a negative pledge means Sherman is not allowed to take out additional debt on this property. Want to be clear about that. And then the surplus, surplus cash pledge agreement, which is the second document that where there were questions on tonight, totally understand, this is a document that provides the mechanism for how we get paid in the event that they were refinancing this loan that's being considered now. We want to get our two million dollars plus interest back before anyone else. So it sets a priority of payees, and it also establishes from where we will be paid the remainder of whatever we're owed. So I want to be really clear, we have security, and we have a guarantee for that security. It's not the same as we had under the mezzanine loan, but it's what we were able to structure through months of negotiation and hard work with them, and a thank you to Mr. Door who's with us, our financial, our deputy city manager and CFO, as well as our financial consultants who reviewed all of the information as well, and staff, thank you. So I wanted to give you those assurances, as well as we negotiated some additional benefits for us that were not included in the original mezzanine loan securitization, which includes annual payments to the city, Wida, of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year until the end of the term, which is twenty-twenty-nine. That's not changing. That's always been the end of the term, twenty-twenty-nine. Also, to our benefit is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar pledge that Wida, the city, will hold in our accounts. This is new, that will help fund tenant improvements for the Market Hall, the food Market Hall that we're so excited about, that we really want to have happen. So that five-hundred thousand, if it's not used, it, it is defaults to us, to Wida and the city, and it does not apply to the balance on the loan. That's a big difference, and a good one for the city, frankly, that we were excited about, because in the end, what do we want? We want a food market hall. We want activation. We want that thing to get going, get out of the ground. By the way, they've already submitted their building plans to us, and we're in the first round of reviews, we're starting out the second round of reviews, so that's, that's moving forward. The necessity of refinancing is something that's very common, as I said, to come out of a bridge loan status into that permanent loan. And we frankly, we and every developer out there are at the mercy of the financial market right now, which is why, you know, we, we worked in good faith and negotiated what we felt was still a deal that protected our interests and was able to obtain some mutual beneficial outcomes, being, you know, money back faster to the city, not waiting for the balloon payment at the end, as well as helping to hasten the development of the food market hall. So with that, I'll, I'll stop there, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Counselor Demott?
I appreciate you explaining that, and that's, I think it's good for folks to understand the security that is tied to it. I do think one question that former Counselor Baker asked that I'm curious about, just functionally, so if, you know, they went under, you know, in his example, and being an LLC, like what would actually happen, and how would the city use those securities to get their money?
Sure. So the negative pledge agreement is part of that process. So this, as I said, allows us security that they cannot take on additional debt that would max out the equity that already exists in the entity. Also, the surplus cash pledge agreement is the vehicle that outlines how do we get that money? So we're at the top of the stack to get paid out of the equity within the project, which there is considerably more equity, I can say, than the two-point-five million approximately.
That makes sense, so I just, so I understand, so if they went through bankruptcy, go through a court, and we would be top of the pile when they liquidate the asset?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Counselor Hatt?
Yes, I don't have any questions. I just want to say, thank you so much, Director Kimball, for explaining that. I want to thank you, I want to thank CFO Larry Door, I want to thank all of staff that worked on this. Thank you so much for your hard work, and thank you for, for protecting us, and thank you so much for, for explaining and everything you're doing. So I just want to show my appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, you're very welcome. Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you, Counselor Demott, for asking that clarifying question. I think that was extremely helpful, and I just want to say that I think that overall, this is absolutely necessary, like you said, that food hall, to establishing that downtown area that we've already invested such a significant amount of time and money in, and thank you for explaining that the loan is secured.
Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
I would just like to ask why they got a two-and-a-half percent loan when that isn't the market rate?
Sure, that's a great question.
I don't really think that's fair to these taxpayers, that they're only getting two-and-a-half percent, when you can go out in the money market and get four, over four, so.
Sure. Thank you, thank you for the question. So the current note agreement that we have with Sherman is three-point-five percent. So it was, it was five, I've heard that number said tonight. It was five during the construction phase, construction loan. By operation, it, it was reduced to three-point-five percent, so it's currently three-point-five percent is what the rate is of interest. Part of the negotiation in order to get payments of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to the city immediately, to start immediately and get some of the money back faster, that was a concession to drop a percentage point, so it's, it's part of the negotiation. As I said, we also got the concession of five-hundred thousand dollars to be held by the city, Wida, and not count towards the loan repayment. So that was, that was part of the negotiation.
Counselor Azadi?
Just wanted to thank staff, another creative, financially savvy solution. It's money faster for us. It's five-hundred K not tied to a balance, to the actual balance. It's really creative and great work to all, to all of you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hatt?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-one vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Thirty-five. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Thirty-five on first reading, amending section one dash seven dash two of the Westminster Municipal Code, setting the salary for presiding municipal court judge Jason Longtime for twenty-twenty-five.
Counselor Hatt?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Thirty-five. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, Counselor Demott?
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hatt?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
That brings us to item C two. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to execute a revised employment agreement with Jason Longtime for his services as presiding municipal court judge with an effective date of January one, twenty-twenty-five.
Counselor Hatt?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item C two. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Azadi?
Just wanted to thank the judge for his service for, to us. He's a great employee, and I'm really happy that he's here.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hatt?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
It's nine oh eight, and we adjourn the council meeting, going straight into the Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting for October fourteenth. Roll call incorporating the Board of Directors from the previous meeting. Do we have a motion for the minutes? Counselor or Director Demott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of September ninth, twenty-twenty-four meeting as presented.
Counselor Carmelia?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September ninth to twenty-twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, or voice vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to a public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up?
We do, we have one speaker signed up. The speaker's Karen Calaviti.
Okay, we will open the public hearing and welcome Karen Calaviti.
Actually, I, I wanted to share a little bit about it before I spoke.
We have the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Okay. It is nine-ten, and I close the public hearing, and that moves us to adopt resolution two-thirty-five. Counselor Demott, I mean Director Demott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt resolution number two-thirty-five, adopting the twenty-twenty-five proposed budget for the Westminster Economic Development Authority as presented.
Director Hatt?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution two-thirty-five. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Carmelia?
Yes.
Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Hatt?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland?
I want to say no, I'm not educated enough on this to be voting.
Okay, the motion passes on a five-one vote.
That brings us to resolution two-thirty-six. Board Member Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number two-thirty-six, amending the Aspire Project Finance and Development Agreements between the Westminster Economic Development Authority and Sherman Estates, and release the subordinate deed of trust on the Aspire Project.
Board Member Demott?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution two-thirty-six. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Hatt?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Board Member Ireland?
No.
And Board Member Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-one vote.
It is now nine-eleven, and I will close this meeting, and we will convene the General Improvement District Board for October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Roll call, please. It just says that, I don't know why it doesn't say, I can incorporate it. Incorporating the, the Board, are we Board of Directors or...
You are Board of Directors.
Board of Directors in the previous meeting, and that brings us to the minutes of A through I. Can we do it that way? Do I have a motion? Board Member Demott?
I move to approve the minutes of the October ninth, twenty-twenty-three meetings of the Hundred and Thirty-Sixth Avenue, Hundred and Forty-Fourth Avenue, Amherst Downtown, Mandalay Town Center, Orchard Park Place, North Park, twelve-hundred Sheridan Crossing in the Westminster Station General Improvement District as presented.
Board Member Hatt?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of items A through I. Is there any further discussion? All those, no, do you... Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to, do we have anybody signed up for this public hearing? There is no one signed up for this public hearing. It is nine-thirteen. I open and close the public hearing for the Westminster General Improvement District, and that brings us to resolution twenty-nine. Board Member Demott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-nine that sets the mill levy for tax year twenty-twenty-four for collection in twenty-twenty-five at sixteen mills for the City of Westminster, Hundred and Thirty-Sixth Avenue, General Improvement District, formally adopts the twenty-twenty-five for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Hatt? Board Member Ha.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 29. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Ireland.
I just want to know on all of these, is this mill levy staying the same? Is it always was, or is it going up on all of these?
Welcome.
Thank you, Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer at City of Westminster and treasurer to the Board of Directors for these various general improvement districts. Thank you for the question. And first, if I may, just introduce that for all nine general improvement districts before you tonight, there are no major or minor policy decisions of any choice. Many of these have been established for several years now, in fact, a couple more than 20 years, and they've served to create development and maintenance in Westminster. And so a lot of them have been very steady state over a number of years. And so hence, there's no council or, excuse me, staff presentation tonight that would provide any decisions necessary by the board. So to answer the question, all of the mill levies in place will be the same for 2025 as they've been for 2024, so no changes. And also, I have with me Director Lindsay Kimball, who can answer potentially any questions related to any economic development aspects, and Vicky Adams, Business Operations Administrator, for any other questions related to the various nine districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, seeing no one else to speak, roll call, please.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
And Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 23. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 23 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 20 mills for the City of Westminster, 144th Avenue, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Azadi.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 23. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
And Board Member Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 44. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 44 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 5.5 or 5.0 mills for the City of Westminster, Amherst General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Azadi.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 44. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
And Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 8. Board Member Azadi.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 8 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 35.0 mills for the City of Westminster Downtown General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Ha.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 8. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
And Board Member Ha.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 28. Board Member Azadi.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 28 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 35.0 mills for the City of Westminster, Mandalay Town Center, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Demont.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 28. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Azadi.
No, that's not, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
And Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 17. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 17 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 13 mills for the Westminster Orchard Park Place North General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates funds as budgeted.
Board Member Azadi.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 17. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha. Yes. Oh, sorry. Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution Number 11. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 11 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 10 mills for the City of Westminster, Park 1200, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Councillor Ha, I mean Board Member Ha.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 11. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha. Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
And Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 41. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 41 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 12 mills for the City of Westminster, Sheridan Crossing, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Ha.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, adopt Resolution 41. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
And Board Member Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution Number 7. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 7 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2024 for collection in 2025 at 35 mills for the City of Westminster, Westminster Station, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2025 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Azadi.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 7. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
And Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
It is 9:22, and we are adjourned.